Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can still hear you. We're getting hooked up on YouTube. Soon as we get hooked up on YouTube, Will, we'll get the meeting started.
Can you see me now? I see you guys.
Yeah, we can see you.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Okay, everybody ready to go? We're on YouTube and think we got everybody on that's gonna be on. Newcastle City Council Meeting Monday, December 21st, 2020 comes to order. Roll call, please.
Mike Guffey.
President.
Jeff Hancock.
President.
Jerry Walden.
Here.
Aaron Dickens.
Hi, here.
Mark Coger. Mark's muted.
Mark. Here, sorry.
Lynn Perdue.
President.
Rex Peckinpah.
Here.
Are there corrections or additions from the minutes from the former meeting?
I'd like to make the motion.
Accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mike Guffey.
Hi.
Jeff Hancock.
Hi.
Jerry Walden.
Hi.
Aaron Dickens.
Hi.
Mark Coger.
Hi.
Lynn Perdue.
Hi.
Rex Peckinpah.
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero. President, I turn this meeting over to you.
Thank you, your honor. We have no resolutions in ordinances. We have third reading on thirty eight fifty, modifying chapter one fifteen of city code. That's the towing ordinance and I am going to make a mo- make a motion to amend that. And hopefully after we do that, make a motion to table it until January, so everybody can look at what we've amended and put it to rest in January. But anyway, making a motion to amend thirty eight fifty in the following manner. I want to say I appreciate Mr. Coger, Deputy Chief Wardlow and different people who put in work on this. It's been for various reasons, taken a while, but I think it's gonna get done in a good manner. So I'm making a motion to amend this to reflect that under required insurance, letter A, the amount will be for vehicular liability, one million dollars for each truck and used in the towing of a vehicle. For general liability, insurance, an amount of no less than one million dollars per occurrence. Letter C, on hook coverage of vehicles being towed in an amount of no less than one hundred thousand dollars. And D, garage keepers insurance covering stored vehicles and the contents of stored vehicles and amount of no less than three hundred thousand dollars. In section one fifteen dot zero seven towing and in storage charges. We, I think in what we passed last time, it reflected a one hundred and fifty dollar charge, minimum additional charge of a hundred and fifty dollars. But down in letter three for towing of bicycles and mopeds, a sum of fifty dollars. I would like to add there, make letter three for the towing of bicycles, a sum of fifty dollars. And I'll add in a number there. It could be four and bump, four and five to five and six. I'll let Mr. Harvey determine that, but for the towing of bicycles, fifty dollars for the towing of mopeds, one hundred dollars. Mopeds are a little harder to deal with than bicycles. And then, in what is currently number five, for the towing of a semi tractor, semi trailer, the sum of five hundred dollars, I want to add there per hour. That really reflects pretty much what everybody, county, state, and different places are charging for that service. And then under letter B, number one, I believe we did pass the rate of thirty five dollars per day, but I was convinced that the twenty four, we we put in there each full twenty four hour period and that the insurance companies don't really look at that way. They look at it in terms of calendar days. So I would add taking out full twenty four hour period and just placing in there. So it says thirty five dollars for each calendar day a vehicle is stored on a licensees lot or garage. Then parentheses two, the rate of one hundred dollars per day for each, taking out the twenty four hour period, each calendar day, semi tractor or trailer stored. And then moving on, see if there's what else we had. I believe that was the extent of the changes that I'm proposing is amendment to the ordinance. And so that's the motion. If anybody would like to second. I'll second that motion.
Motion made and second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mike Guffey.
Hi.
Jeff Hancock.
Hi.
Jerry Walden.
Hi.
Aaron Dickens.
Hi.
Mark Coger.
Hi.
Lynn Perdue.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
And now I'd like to move that we table thirty eight fifty until the first meeting in January. So we can basically, so basically we can have it all in writing. So anybody that wants to look at it can look at the ordinance as a whole and read it.
I'll second.
Motion made and second. Roll call vote, please.
Mike Guffey.
Hi.
Jeff Hancock.
Hi.
Jerry Walden.
Hi.
Aaron Dickens.
Hi.
Mark Coger.
Hi.
Lynn Perdue.
Hi.
Rex Peckinpah.
Hi. And Mr. Harvey, if is is Joel on here?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Harvey, I will email you those changes because it may have been hard to follow. So.
Okay.
And then that's it for our ordinances. I'll turn it over to Mr. Guffey for a committee report.
Motion carries seven zero.
I have one thing, Mr. Mayor. I had, I had a couple of residents that live on the North Twenty Seventh Street. It's in the six hundred block. The road had been cut. It's an old cut. Of course, it was filled and it was paved, but it has settled big time and it goes from one side of the road to the other. And it just, they telling me that it just keeps sinking. I have drove over it a couple of times. They mentioned that they did call in turn it down, but if we could just look at that and see what needs to be done, I'd appreciate it. If you have trouble finding it, I'm off for the next two weeks. If anybody wants to get ahold of me, I'll, I'll go out there with them. But I appreciate that, if we can look into that.
Where I was born, six oh six North Twenty Seventh Street. I know exactly where it's at.
You know where it is.
Yeah, exactly. How you feeling, Mike?
Oh, I feel great. Just can't taste anything yet, but other than that, I'm all right. No smell, no taste.
You're out of quarantine yet?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been back to work. I worked last week.
Oh, good. Okay. I'm sorry. Is there anything else?
Uh, yeah. Merry Christmas to all of you. Happy New Year.
Okay, well, we'll move on to Mr. Hancock then. Twenty twenty's been a difficult year. Hopefully twenty twenty one is better and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to you.
Mr. Walden.
I have a few things here. We did have our ECR IRP meeting and basically all it was were state representatives giving us an update on what they perceive for this upcoming state legislature. And they really couldn't say much. They really don't know what's gonna be put before them. There, as Mr. Mayor, you probably understand, there is a a foreseeable shortfall from what we're used to taking in. That goes from the state on down and everyone there says, don't forget the cities, don't forget the towns, you know. We're struggling, you know, if the state's struggling, we're gonna be struggling. But that's pretty much the whole, you know, they, they really couldn't say much without having any meetings at this time. But they did promise they'd keep us filled, filled in with, with what would be coming up. Joel, hopefully you'll fill everyone in what happened with Landbait Corporation. So I'll leave that up to you. Do want to recognize one of our citizens, Mark Sean Orr. He, uh, this is a big deal. He, uh, he had a couple of his art pieces, his photographs, that's on display over in Slovakia. And he is one of eighteen artists, photographers worldwide being represented. Well, Henry County, Newcastle, Indiana. He has two pieces in the showcase and they took it from the, the worldwide organizations, New Castles of the World. His two photographs, I don't know if any of you follow his work or anything, but he's just an amazing photographer. One is a shot of a couple of large rolled hay bales. And the other is a shot of a pick cornfield with a flock of blackbirds taking off. They're, they're uniquely colored. But for one of our own citizens be recognized worldwide, that, that's really huge. And I'm very proud that he's getting this recognition because he deserves it. He, he's really good at what he does. So I just wanted to bring Mark up and if you have a chance, go to his Facebook page. He has video of the presentation. His name is mentioned and Henry County, Indiana is mentioned. So it's, it's pretty neat. Other than that, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Mike, I didn't know you were sick, so I'm glad to see you're doing better and, and everyone stay safe and healthy during this time. Thank you.
Can I just insert something in there with Jerry touched on right at the very beginning? And that is
Sure.
I've, I've took a lesson this year, my first year, and I listened to Mark Coger about getting in contact with our representatives. And I have sent out several emails and I will continue to do it, but I know that like Jerry said, you know, this is a tough year, but that's what I've been drilling on them, you know. Don't forget the cities or the communities because man, we, we need it, but thanks for that report, Jerry. I do appreciate. I just wanted to put that in and Mark, thank you for, on me, a new guy, the newbie on the block, but we need to do that. That is very important.
You're welcome. Keep it up.
Yes, sir.
And they know us from here in Newcastle game because we do do a good job of that. They, they know us and they know that we are involved and that we're watching what they're doing. So don't, Mike, you're exactly right. Don't hesitate to email, call, email's best is what I've been told. So thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, is that it, Jerry?
Yes, thanks for that.
Mr. Dickens.
On that same topic, I have shared links on my city council Facebook page to those representative surveys. I think they're, wow, this might be my naivety, but I think they do get a report of those results. So be sure to do that and mention on there that you are on the city council. And just tell them what you think and squeaky wheel gets the, gets the grease. So I haven't got a whole lot of communication back from one of them. But I keep sending them. So I also have had several people reach out and wanted to thank the city for their, I guess it would be a co-op work with the North Pole. That has been great, especially this time of year. So appreciate, you know, our elves working with the North Pole elves on that, especially our house. And then I, I would challenge each of you. I try to do this every year. I mean, personally and from a city standpoint. Try to think of New Year's resolutions. I think this year is a great example of how those can be totally derailed. But also I just sitting here reflecting on what all we have accomplished, at least from, you know, our, our end. I know, you know, Brenda has done a heck of a job with finances. We've got a lot of projects still going, thanks to the administration. I mean, things changed early in the year with the climate nationally and also locally. And so, you know, to introduce a resolution on a hot topic like that to show that we are welcoming of everybody and to, you know, ha- offer up training for bias and microaggressions, you know, one of my New Year's resolutions for twenty twenty was to try to get the city to go more green. We've done that. We've got new windows in the Murphy Building. I mean, even in a stagnant year, a stagnant of a year as twenty twenty was, I think that we have a lot to be proud of and it's not obviously just the city council or the administration, but we've got a lot of citizens, both private and, and the head of organizations that, I mean, really need to be thanked and appreciated. So I would just challenge you guys to come up with at least one New Year's resolution for the city for our first meeting out of twenty twenty one. I'm gonna do that. And would be really excited to hear what you guys, what your goals are for twenty twenty one and in regards to the city, but hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. Hope you get in touch with families in one way or another. I appreciate working with you guys.
Thanks, Aaron. Mr. Coger.
Well, we, I guess we have a homework assignment for next meeting, thanks to teacher Dickens. Now, again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Congratulations to the mayor for new grandbaby, granddaughter.
Yeah.
Again, stay positive. Have a great Christmas, great New Year. Talk to everybody in a couple of weeks.
Okay, Mr. Purdue.
Just, you know, again, this has been a tough year, but you know, I, I think this council is one that, that, that has no fear of voicing their opinions. We're not a bunch of yes guys, and I think that's just fantastic that we can all come together and discuss our concerns and and still everybody get along and just remember, you know, we're all on the same team and, you know. And I'm looking forward to Aaron's challenge for next week. I've got a couple of things I'd like to, you know, keep moving forward on. So hey, everybody stay safe, have a good holiday and that's, that's all I've got.
You too. Got a few things. All of them, I think are good. Is, is Mike Burgum, is he on board at the meeting or is?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, well, I'll wait till, I'll talk to him about this. One, it's, I just wanted to get an update from him on when they were gonna order benches and, you know, that's not something we need to worry about. Got news, a week or so ago, that the Fitzgerald Trail will actually begin being constructed on, in the spring of this coming year, twenty twenty one. That's a awesome thing. It's a, it's a great example of how government works in terms of our fortitude and the state's slowness, but I'm glad that we're getting that finally done. Also, you know, so blessed, you know, I don't know that our community is different than many others. I mean, I know about every community has people that are willing to give, but we are blessed that we do have a lot of people that are willing to give, that are willing to organize programs. So people that are less fortunate can have Christmas and, you know, a few weeks ago, Thanksgiving and different things like that. I mean, we have a lot of people step up and I really appreciate those people. Two other things that have happened recently, just saw today, Mason Gillis playing basketball Purdue. He was just chosen as the freshman of the week in the Big Ten. Had, has done a great job since the first game. It seems like every game he gets better and better and that's one of our hometown guys. Just so proud of the effort he puts forth and and the success he's having. And then Tom Allen, head football coach at IU, of course, played football in Newcastle, wrestled at Newcastle. You know, has, has worked his way up through the ranks and this, he was just chosen as the Big Ten Coach of the Year. And I mean, that's, you know, I'm hoping he gets chosen as National Coach of the Year. The Big Ten Coach of the Year is pretty, a pretty big deal. Very proud of what he's done there at IU, even though I am a Purdue guy, very proud of him because, you know, I knew him since he was a child. And disappointed that IU didn't get a better bowl. They should have had one, but that's just the way things go. But anyway, very proud of Mason, very proud of Tom, very proud of our community for what they put forth for people. And that's my spiel for tonight.
Rex. Rex.
Yep.
Would you mind reminding everyone what the Fitzgerald Trail is all about, where it's gonna start and go to?
Cause we have some. Yeah, the Fitzgerald Trail basically kind of started out back, oh, it's all probably almost eight or nine years ago. I mean, when, when I first took off, Jimmy Kidd was in office and he and I, and then Ed Hill and Jeff Ray and especially probably those four. And then we got other people, including the mayor and, and some other folks on board. But anyway, we saw the need for some way for kids to get from Wilbur Ride School down Washington Street to Osborne Park or from that area, you know, down to Wilbur Ride without walking on the road. I mean, it's, you know, right now, if they want, and of course, we don't do that right now because of COVID. But if they want to take kids from the school down to Baker Park, there were times when they had to get a police car and kind of block the way for them. And that's just unnecessary. I mean, we need to, and we felt we needed to make sure our kids had a safe way and not just kids, but anybody safe way to get down Washington Street. And now we'll have that and.
It'll be on the north side, correct?
Yeah, it'll be on the north side. That's land the city owns. You know, we, we applied for a Safe Roots to School grant. You know, and, and we had to put some match up for that, but I mean, I think we're gonna get it's a, it's an off the top of my head number, but, you know, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars in state money. So that's a pretty good win for the city.
Thanks, Rex.
Fifty five thou- or five hundred and fifty three thousand is what we're getting.
Okay, Brenda, see, thanks. Just jump in there and make, you know, maybe look bad. I off the top of my head, I couldn't get that.
I just happen to have it right here in front of me.
That's good. But anyway, five hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars and I'll take that anytime we can get it from the state, even if we've got to put up a little money our own. Thanks. I'm just messing with you, Brenda. I wasn't.
No, you're fine.
Joel, would you, would you like to talk a little bit about the land bank, the meeting we have with the land bank?
Oh, sure. Yeah, the, as Jerry mentioned, the Land Bank Corporation had the first meeting of its board of directors last Tuesday. I thought the meeting went very well. We had a good discussion about what we wanted to accomplish with the land bank. Had a discussion about the land bank's appointment of a couple of other directors. We've reached out to one person, Jerry Cash. He has agreed to serve as an additional director. We established a meeting date, which would be the third Thursday of every month. We'll probably be doing meetings by Zoom for the foreseeable future. But I think the next thing we're going to do is we're going to compile a list of city-owned properties and determine a priority for getting those particular properties that are most marketable disposed of quickly into people that can either improve them, demolish them, or put them to good use and get them back on the tax rolls. So if there are any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer those.
I mean, is, and I guess this is all new, so I'm trying to figure out where the boundaries are. But obviously it's gonna take some time to accrue, so, I mean, both land and finances, but then would we also, would the land bank be able to purchase properties that the city wants to get into more friendly owners' hands?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear.
Well, when we get that list, we already own a lot of properties that, that we'll have for sale right away. It's gonna surprise some people how many properties that we do own that we want to get back into the, the land or back into the tax base. So some of them we've already demoed, but we still own them. So it's, it's not only thinking a house that goes to the tax sale that needs to be tore down and, and done something with. We have quite a few properties, for example, the old porthole property. We own it. You know, love to sell it to some business person and get it back in the tax base. So we, we own quite a few properties that are already empty, already been cleaned up, that we just, we need to get rid of.
And that's great and that will save money for the upkeep too, especially the yard we have to mow and all that. So we need to, yeah, turn it into someone else.
Exactly.
The one thing that impressed me, Joel, Greg, you might step in on this too. I was impressed, background information that some of the, the appointed directors had already came up with. We had a couple of people that already been doing some homework. So that really impressed me.
Yeah, got some people that's really excited about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Joel?
I don't have anything else. I've enjoyed working with everybody this year and look forward to continuing that and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Carrie Barrett. Carrie, you have anything you would like to add to this meeting?
No, I, well, I think you guys might need to know that Okra is fiddling a little bit with Main Streets. So they're making, everybody in Indiana Main Streets is three, there are three levels. Your Indiana accredited Main Street, which is what we are, which is the middle level. You're a national Main Street or you're, I can't remember what the lower level is, but basically if you're in lower level, you're just doing events. But I just wanted to let you guys know that they're doing that. I think they're gonna go in some interesting ways in terms of grants. They're gonna make you be at a certain level. So that'll probably be in a few years, but.
How do you get to the national level, Carrie?
You have to have a paid director and you have to have an element of historic preservation. Those are the only components we're missing. So, and you have to pay to be a member of the national Main Street.
Yeah.
So, um, those are the few things. Basically you get to the next level with money. But I'm not asking for any. But I just wanted you guys to be aware that that is, that's gonna start to impact what we do a little bit. So that's it.
Carrie, do you know what that national fee is right offhand?
I, I believe, I, I think it's only five hundred dollars. I mean, it's, it's not crazy.
And what is the?
For us to be at, at level one? Do you want us to be at level one someday or kind of what's your thoughts? What's your, your feelings?
Uh, well, yeah, I think, and that brings me to another thing that I should have started off with is we're working on a strategic plan right now. And I want to thank Mike and Aaron for coming to one of our meetings. It's a long process, but I think at the end of the strategic plan, we'll be able to decide what level we want to be at. I think we'll want to be at the top level because I think it's gonna eliminate you eventually. It will keep you from getting certain grants or certain amounts through Okra.
What is the element of historic preservation that we're missing?
I don't know exactly what it is, Aaron. I think it's an awful lot like what our Historic Preservation Board probably already does. It might be a little bit of education. So that's something that we could take on for sure and then work with the board. So it's, it's really new. They just ruled it out.
Right.
I think that's probably what, what could happen. It, it could be probably fairly, some fairly focused thought and we could get it done fairly easily, I think.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. I would like to let everybody know that, that we have moved EMS down to their new location. We're talking to Josh first thing this morning and I forget if he said it was Friday or Saturday. They had thirty two calls in one day. That's a lot of calls. That's a, that's a lot to cover. But they have, have moved down there. They're staying down there and the, the room's been great. They, they've got room for vehicles. So as, as they've moved, it's, it's been extremely busy and they're, they're excited about being there. So after the first year, when the weather cooperates a little bit, we'll have a grand opening for down there and, and you know, invite some people in, especially some people that donated some large amounts of money to it. So it, it is up and running. It's been very convenient for them to be right next to three and thirty eight to, to get on the highway quickly. So they're excited about that. And all I want to do is just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and encourage everybody to, to be safe this year. Health is still our number one objective and we want everybody to, to continue to be safe this year and have a Happy New Year and. And, uh, next year will be better. It, it, we, we, we've been through a lot this year. We've been through a lot and have rose to the top. We haven't missed a beat. We've kept going and, uh, we've got a lot to be proud of for 2020, as bad as the year was. And, and I think we have, uh, a very optimistic outlook for 2021. And I'm excited for it to get here. It's not going to get here too soon for me, but, uh, I, I think we've got a lot to be proud of and, and, uh, we need to look forward to next year for some exciting things to happen. And, uh, I'll just throw out here, i- it's up to you guys, but, uh, I'm ready to get back together, whether it's here in the chambers or whether it's in the armory. Uh, I leave it up to you guys. I'd like to give you that some thought. Uh, I still think we need to mask up and, uh, I'm, I'm looking at four, uh, cans of sanitizer right now. So I think we still need to be very cautious and aware, but, uh, I, I think we, uh, can be more effective together. And, uh, whenever you guys are ready, I, I, whether it's in the armory or here, uh, it's, it's not out, uh, not a challenge like Aaron passed out, but I, I think it's something that, that we need to start thinking about. So give that some thought.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would have to be in the armory. I, I talked to, uh, Angela Cox today a little bit about it. Uh, you know, her concern, of course, our chamber is, uh, the county meets publicly, but the problem, you know, the county has the courtroom and it's a pretty big open area. Uh, whereas our chambers are much smaller, much more confined. You get very many people in there, it's going to be, you know, pretty close. Uh, but I'd have no problem with going back to the armory for, you know, two, three or four months, if that's what, you know, I mean, hopefully we catch up with a little bit of it with some vaccines and things. And by, by spring, we're, uh, you know, we're not out of the woods, but we're certainly on the edge of the woods.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll give that some thought. If anybody has any comments, you're more than welcome to speak up on, on that at any time. So, anybody have anything else to say?
I have one thing, Your Honor. Everybody forgets me. Um, six o'clock Christmas Eve. Thanks to Aaron Dickens. He helped me get this ball rolling. Um, I set up an event on my Facebook page called Santa Bells. And I will be in the clock tower of the courthouse at six o'clock to start the bell ringing. Anybody that wants to join in, all you have to do is bring bells, get out on your front porch and ring them to bring Santa in for all the kids here in Henry County. And I'd be very interested to see how many neighborhoods hears bells ringing at six o'clock on Christmas Eve.
The whole county, not just citywide, the whole county?
The whole county. So, and any churches that anybody has affiliation with, if they want to get involved, they're more than welcome to ring their bells right along with us. It's a two minute bell ringing for, to bring Santa in for all the kids.
Okay, thank you.
And other than that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Kendra.
Kendra.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody. So thankful for you all and be safe.
Okay, monkey for Jurn.
Move to Jurn.
Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Take care, everybody.
Goodbye.